... flag of the United States of America and every republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice of all.
Do we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Person?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Coleman?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Ms. Brier?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you, Jason. First item on the agenda are a couple of proclamations.
Hey, proclamation, whereas domestic violence is a serious and widespread social problem in our nation, with approximately one-third of all female homicide victims being killed by an intimate partner, and whereas it has been estimated that every nine seconds, a woman is beaten by her husband or boyfriend in this country, and in more than half those instances, children under the age of 12 are present, and whereas 43 percent of the assaults occurring in Washington State in 2013 were domestic violence, and one in four women in the state will report being injured by domestic violence sometime in her lifetime, and whereas 35 people were murdered as a result of domestic violence in Washington State in 2013, and whereas City of Renton is working to improve the overall response to and the reduction of domestic violence in our region with awareness to the cultural differences in our community, and whereas October is nationally recognized as Domestic Violence Month, and the third week in October is recognized as WYCA Week Without Violence, now therefore I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2014 to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and do hereby proclaim October 19th through 25th, 2014, to be YWCA Week Without Violence in the City of Renton, and encourage everyone in our community to take an active role in supporting all victims so they can lead healthy lives safe from violent and abusive behavior. And witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed the sixth day of October 2014, signed Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I move that this proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
The move of Mr. Taylor, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and it's my pleasure to present one of these proclamations, Tina Harris. Of course, everybody knows Tina from our Domestic Violence Division, and Liz Mills with the YWCA.
Actually, Mayor Law asks that Mr. Mark Williams is going to accept on behalf of the task force. He's also the grandfather of Allison Lady that passed away this year, so. Thank you, Mayor Law and council members. Currently, I have Liz Mills with us here with the YWCA, and she's going to be giving us a little information on what the Y is doing, their advocacy program, and the Week Without Violence. I also want to mention that not only do we have Allison Lady's family with us today, but we also have Jessica Shoal's family with us today as well. So, we have a great group of individuals here from our community that have experienced a tremendous loss. And with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Liz, I'm sorry, at this time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, as you mentioned, one in four women will experience domestic violence in her lifetime. And as you know, recent high-profile events involving NFL players and domestic violence has really put this in the spotlight. There's a great opportunity to hear and make some lasting systemic change. Men and women across the country are having really important dialogues about the impact of domestic violence in our communities. But City of Renton has been out in front of this. You've been a very valued partner with us. We very much appreciate your support of our work. We thank you for raising awareness about domestic violence through this proclamation, through the very powerful display you have right down in your lobby, and through the work you do day in and day out. On behalf of our board, our staff, and the people we serve, we really thank you for your commitment to ending violence and to making our community safer for all of us. One of the things YWCA's are doing across the country during the month of October is encouraging you to go purple. And so when you, as the home of the Seahawks, when you're wearing your Seahawks gear, you know, add a little purple to it, talk about domestic violence, bring it up with your friends, family, and colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor? I think we have one more. Please come.
Mayor Law, city council. City council members, families of other honorees, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of my granddaughter, Allison Lady, and our family, I would like to thank you, Mayor and the City of Renton, for everything you have done for our family and honoring our granddaughter here this evening. I would like to publicly thank the Renton Police Department, Fire Department, and Medic One, especially the first responders who raced to try and help my granddaughter in her time of need. I would like to thank Tina Harris, a domestic violence advocate. She's been our guardian angel through this whole thing. Detective Bartfield and Edwards who have worked tirelessly to bring this to justice. And of course, the King County Prosecutor's Office for doing everything they've done for us. As you can see in our T-shirts, we are a unified family, and we are here to refuse to abuse, and we hope that everyone will take this seriously because it is a serious problem in this country and has become an epidemic, and we hate to see it continue as it has. Again, I would like to thank you for the proclamation this evening and honoring our daughter Allison. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I think this is a good segue to, I'd like to share something with my colleagues, you, and also the viewers at home, and as well as the people here tonight. Tonight is the beginning of Domestic Violence Month, and I'm pleased to say that I ran across some information that I thought was very profound for one about local, well-known people here, Seahawk player, Russell Wilson. For those who don't know, there's an article out called "Let's Talk About It," dated October the 2nd. I'm going to read it to you. It begins with, "I used to beat people up. Truthfully, I used to beat people up a lot. Many of you readers probably think I have been Mr. Goody-Two-Shoes all my whole life, but honestly, I was a bully growing up in elementary and middle school. I threw kids against the wall, I rubbed their heads in the dirt at recess, I bit them, I even knocked teeth out. I had a lot of anger, and I didn't know what to do with it. Thankfully, I was saved by my faith when I was 14 years old and was able to start living for others instead of just myself. But if you've ever been at the bottom of a pile with me, you know that I still have a bit of that bully deep down inside. Just ask Demarcus Ware. And I work hard to keep it there. As NFL players, we do not play a general game, but our hits, our anger, our aggressive behaviors need to be regulated and confined to the field. Recent incidents of domestic violence have forced the league, its fans, and players to take a hard look into our collective conscience. To be honest, many NFL players are reluctant to address such a sensitive issue. How do you fix a problem so big and complex? How do you speak about something so damaging and painful to families? Domestic violence extends far beyond the spotlight of the NFL. It's not unique to my profession. It's not confined to America. All over the world, right now, at this moment, men, women, and children are taking refuge in anonymous shelters. Many more are suffering silently without protection. Every day, up to 10,000 Americans are turned away from shelters due to lack of resources. What can you do to help? All I can do is my part and invite you to help me. I recently launched the Why Not You Foundation, where I'll be raising funds and awareness for a number of worthy causes. It's a place where I plan to give back. And for my first initiative, I want us to pass the piece to support victims of domestic violence. The idea behind Pass the Peace is simple. It's a promise. I'm sharing my love for you. I want to take care of you, and I'm here for you. Maybe in our cynical world, this seems too ambitious or even naive. Maybe this issue is too taboo, too toxic. I've tended to avoid controversial topics throughout my career, but in my first piece for the Players Tribune, I wanted to be open and address something that's important, timely, and relevant. I've been silent on the issue for too long, falling back on the "I can't speak to someone else's personal life" excuse. But victims need physical, emotional, and financial support and care, and the resources to get away from their abusers. Abusers, you need to get help. You can change. How many of you reading right now knew that October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month? I certainly didn't. I had to Google it. And that's part of why I felt so inspired to do my part. This initiative, this story, is about acknowledging something difficult, something we'd rather not see. When I look back at beating kids up on the playground, I don't like that image, but I moved past that place in my life, and I'm proud of the man I am now. This issue is much bigger than NFL suspensions. Domestic violence isn't going to disappear tomorrow or the next day. But the more we choose not to talk about it, the more we shy away from the issue, the more we lose. I can't fix the world. I can't fix the NFL. I can't change the guys around me. The only person I can change is the one in the mirror. I'm not a perfect person by any means. I'm just a recovering bully. But if we start being honest about our pain, our anger, and our shortcomings instead of pretending they don't exist, then maybe we'll leave the world a better place than we found it. For those of us in the NFL, there's no excuse for violence off the field. Russell Wilson. The foundation is called the Why Not You Foundation if you're interested in going there to get more information to support this cause, and I'm just proud that we have someone on our Seahawks team who is standing up to try to come out and be honest about this issue. And I think that men need to take the lead on this issue. We need to see more men taking the lead on this issue and speaking out about men who don't understand how to control their anger. That is all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. Taylor. Well, I think that, as I look in the audience, I see moms, aunts, grandparents, the victims just from our own community. And so we know that this is a real thing that happens. And so it's a big issue. It's the right topic for us to be concerned about and to take seriously. We're very thankful, Tina, to have you work on the issue for us. Appreciate the why and your involvement, and, you know, we'll continue the battle. But it's very important, and I think the public awareness is a very important campaign. So, thank you for being here, and thank you to the families who are here tonight. Okay, the next one is Fire Prevention Week.
A proclamation, whereas in 1920, President Woodrow Wilson declared Fire Prevention Day, and in 1922, the day became the week containing October 9th in special observance of the Great Chicago Fire of 1871, which killed more than 250 persons, left 100,000 homeless, and destroyed more than 17,400 buildings. And whereas the United States has one of the worst records for residential fire deaths in the world, and whereas many families in the United States are lacking an effective and comprehensive home fire escape plan, and whereas developing an effective and comprehensive home fire escape plan and practicing it at least twice a year are critical to escaping a fire safely and reducing a family's fire risk, and whereas proper installation, testing, and maintenance of smoke alarms are part of a thorough home fire escape plan, and whereas the City of Renton Fire Service is dedicated to the protection of life and property from the devastating effects of fire, now therefore I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim the week of October 5th to the 11th, 2014, to be Fire Prevention Week in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in this special observance. And witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed the sixth day of October 2014, signed Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Person?
Move the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
The move by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And it's my pleasure to present this to Fire Chief Mark Peterson and our new Fire Marshal, Angela St. John.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. I apologize. So excited. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. We're honored to be here tonight and to have your support with fire prevention efforts within the community of Renton. With three out of five home fire fatalities occurring where there's no working smoke alarm, that brings attention to this year's campaign, which targets working smoke alarms, save lives, test yours every month. And so it's probably the single most important thing every person in this room can do. So I'd like to encourage you tonight when you go home to just take a moment to check your own smoke alarms, and we'll continue to be working out in the community over the next week to get that message out as well. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Angela, and welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next is a special, very special presentation, Mr. Zimmerman, Puget Sound Energy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. I'm Greg Zimmerman, Renton's Public Works Administrator. As you know, the city is in the process of completing a project to replace nearly 4,000 streetlights, high-pressure sodium streetlights, with light-emitting diode streetlights. Those are better known as LED lights. Right now, it's looking like we're on schedule, on track to reduce our streetlight power bills around $250,000 a year, which is a significant savings. After paying our low-interest loan that we took out in order to build the project to replace the 4,000 lights, the net savings will be about $50,000 this first year, and in 15 years, when the loan is paid off, it will be a very large savings. So it's already paying dividends that we did this project. In addition to the $3.2 million low-interest loan that we took out, we secured two grants in order to pay for this project. One of the grants was a $50,000 conservation grant from the State Department of Commerce. The second one was an energy conservation grant in the amount $589,000 from Puget Sound Energy. Before inviting Puget Sound Energy representatives up to present their check, and they need several people to do it because it's a large check, I'd like to recognize some important contributors to this valuable project. From finance, Ewan Wong, Hi McGwin, and Tracy Shoal helped us with the financing aspect. From Public Works, Chris Barnes and Eric Cutshell managed the project. Doug Kilpatrick from the Department of Enterprise Services helped us with the grants. Pat Gibbon from the Department of Commerce was also helping us with the other grant. Bill Klein from our energy services contractor, Amoresco. Project Manager Chris Hack from Northwest Edison. And Pat Kimberg and Donnell Tru from PSE Infolite. So there's a lot of people that worked on this project. It's a successful project, and it's doing what it's supposed to do, save money and conserve energy. Here to present the PSE Energy Conservation Grant is Andy Wapler. He's Puget Sound Energy's Vice President of Corporate Affairs, along with Jessica Raker and Catherine Taylor.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. A pleasure to be here tonight talking about this. And I think it's really a multi-bottom line when we do this. There are the parts Greg mentioned in terms of the energy savings and the dollars saved because of that. But the other thing that's really great about these lights to me is you get a public safety benefit from it, and you get a benefit for your city crews because chances are they have more important things they can do than change light bulbs. But the great thing is these bulbs last for years, and so from a public safety benefit, a law enforcement benefit, a livability benefit, you want your streetlights to be on, and these are on a lot more often in addition to using a lot less energy when they are on. I'd like to have Jessica Raker for our Energy Efficiency Group just give a little description of what the project was all about.
It was a pleasure to work on this project with the City of Renton and Amoresco. This project that PSE is helping to fund changed out over about 4,000 streetlights in the City of Renton. It saves 3 million kilowatt-hours annually, which is enough energy to power 300 homes. So it's a lot of savings, and we're very pleased to be able to provide our support for that.
Thank you.
And Mr. Zimmerman has already tried to use his phone app to deposit this. It didn't work. Here's your check for $589,409.
Thank you very much, Andy. We appreciate that. I want to see the size of that billfold, Andy, that that. Okay, well, thank you very much. Now we're moving on to a public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant Funding. John Cullum is going to make that presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council President, and council members. My name is John Cullum. I'm a project manager with the Community and Economic Development Department. Happy tonight to be here for the subject of tonight's public hearing, which is the 2014 and 2015 Community Development Block Grant Funding. We also refer to this as CDBG funding. CDBG funds are allocated by the federal government through the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, and they're received by the city through a joint inter-local agreement with King County. Tonight, staff is seeking approval of an amendment to the city's 2014 CDBG funding plan and approval of the 2015 CDBG funding plan. In summary, staff will recommend that approximately $78,000 in unallocated CDBG funds from 2014 be utilized for economic development activities, and that the overall 2015 allocation of approximately $630,000 in CDBG funds be utilized for King County constructional set-asides, city planning and administration, and economic development activities. In past years, the city has allocated, in past years, the city has allocated its CDBG funds to assist primarily human service programs, such as the city's Housing Repair Assistance Program, which has been managed by the Community Services Department. The Community Services and Community and Economic Development Departments have reviewed how unallocated CDBG funds from 2014 and the upcoming 2015 funding can be utilized instead for economic development activities, primarily to assist in downtown's revitalization efforts. Our departments are recommending that the city repurpose the 2014 unallocated funds and a portion of the 2015 allocation of CDBG funds for such economic development activities, and use general fund money in 2015 to support human service programs currently funded by CDBG funding. The human services programs that are currently funded by CDBG dollars, the housing repair, and three human services programs managed by Community Services Department, are recommended to be funded by the general fund started in 2015. The programs, 2015 cost programs, are collectively estimated to be about $240,000. One-time audit settlement money available in 2014 is anticipated to be used to allow the general fund to backfill human services contracts and housing repair programs in 2015. The human services program, including support for human services agencies and the Housing Repair Assistance Program, will continue to be operated as they currently are with the change to the general fund funding. CDBG funds can then be repurposed by the city for commercial rehabilitation and public infrastructure improvements, which are common activities in any community's economic development program to spur private investment. Cities throughout the country have developed programs utilizing CDBG funds where property and business owners are offered grants or loans at favorable terms. The grants or loans are used as incentives to encourage physical improvements and correct code violations that combat lighting conditions in existing buildings, as well as to encourage the creation of jobs. The resulting improvements would also benefit residents of the surrounding neighborhoods, including low- and moderate-income households that depend upon the goods and services provided within their immediately surrounding communities. We've heard from developers and property owners, as well as business owners, who attended the mayor's spring forums in downtown, that incentive programs that can help with building improvements are necessary to attract private investment in new businesses into downtown Renton. For this purpose, the Community and Economic Development Department has created the Downtown Commercial Rehab facade Improvement Loan Program, or I'll call it the Rehab Loan Program. We've provided you with a draft description of that program. The primary goals of the program are to encourage investment in downtown, achieve significant visual improvements in its built environment, and improve downtown's overall health and safety. The Rehab Loan Program will target funding to incentivize and assist property and business owners to move forward with projects that promote rehab of commercial buildings to improve facades, and upgrade existing buildings to bring them into compliance with current codes, with the goal of luring new and expanding businesses. Generally, the Rehab Loan Program will have a minimum of $10,000 in assistance per property, and it would be offered in the form of a loan, which must be matched dollar-for-dollar by the applicant. To attract interest in the program, short terms and zero-interest rates would be offered as favorable loan terms, which we hope will make this funding attractive to small businesses, as well as property owners of existing businesses that are vacant and in need of tenants or of structures worthy of saving that can support businesses that will create a vibrant commercial environment in downtown. Residential properties or residential uses within mixed-use projects would not be eligible. Interested borrowers with eligible projects will be required to submit an application package to be considered for funding. Loans are potentially forgivable at the end of the term if all program requirements have been completed and the loan recipient is in good standing. Owners of properties or businesses, and in that case, with landlord consent, would be eligible. I'm going to skip over to the public infrastructure slide and go over that, and then go back to the map. For public infrastructure projects that would be funded by CDBG, we would consider infrastructure improvements related to the commercial rehabilitation projects and revitalization efforts within the greater downtown area. Specific infrastructure projects to receive CDBG funding will be determined in conjunction with projects submitted for the Rehab Loan Program and identified needs in the downtown area. These improvements could be made to public realm items, such as sidewalks, streets, streetlights, landscaping, street furniture, drainage, water, and sewer, and may include projects to increase public right-of-way accessibility where needed. Commercial rehab and public infrastructure eligible activities for the use of CDBG funding, but the activities must also meet a national objective in accordance with HUD regulations. And the city must designate the particular national objective to be met by the activities the city plans to fund. Staff has determined that the commercial rehab and public infrastructure activities will meet the CDBG program's national objective of benefiting low- and moderate-income persons on an area basis. Now, what does this mean? It means the city must designate the boundaries of a service area within which the projects will be located that would be funded. The area benefit objective requires that at least 51% of the residents residing in a primarily residential area are low- and moderate-income persons. Utilizing recent census data, we've determined that the combined downtown and south Renton subareas, as they're designated in the city center community plan, are located within three census tract block groups that meet this requirement. In this case, the census tracts have approximately 62% of the residents that are within the low- and moderate-income levels. Collectively, the combined subareas are primarily residential as required by HUD, but include a significant number of commercial buildings with businesses that serve the residential population in this area. A map of the combined subareas are highlighted in red and shown on the screen. A map of the combined subareas are highlighted in red and shown on the screen. The building improvements provided through the program's funding are anticipated to attract new and expanding businesses that will expand and strengthen the variety of goods and services that are available to all the area's residents, as well as the city residents more broadly. The combined subareas form an urban community where commercial needs can be assessed by residents through a variety of transportation modes, including walking, biking, driving short distances, or using public transit. Leading up to this hearing tonight, we've been working with King County staff to identify the national objective that best fits our purposes here, and we've determined that this particular low and moderate income area benefit objective is going to be more simply to use in putting these projects together than other objectives, such as the low and moderate income jobs objective, or the addressing slums or blight on a spot basis objective. This determination of using that national objective for low and moderate area income benefit would allow us to more easily administer the program. We can simply use the census findings that reveal that at least 51% of the residents in the area qualify as low and moderate income residents, and that would be documented in the process of getting the CDBG approval of the use of the funding from King County. The CDBG funding plan that we're seeking approval of tonight is shown on this slide here. In 2014, there's an estimated $78,000 in unallocated CDBG dollars that can be utilized for economic development activities. Staff is recommending that that entire amount be dedicated to commercial rehab activities through the Rehab Loan Program. In 2015, the city is expected to receive an estimated $630,000 in CDBG funds. After contractual set-asides, per the joint agreement with King County, the amount remaining is estimated to be $397,000. Of that amount, $63,000, or the maximum amount allowed, will be used for planning and administration by the city, and the remaining balance of approximately $334,000 is proposed to be used for these economic development activities. We are proposing that that balance be split 50/50 between the Rehab Loan Program and the infrastructure projects. King County also requires a funding contingency plan in the case that HUD provides us with either an increase in the allocation or a decrease, which often happens. We are simply recommending that if that were to be the case, that the contingency plan the city would follow is to equally split any increase or decrease of the final amounts that are eligible for the economic development activities between the commercial rehab and the public infrastructure activities. To conclude, CDBG funds can provide a source of funding for economic development activities in downtown Renton to incentivize improvements to commercial buildings and public infrastructure. These improvements are expected to create additional economic opportunities and stimulate reinvestment in the downtown and south Renton area, which has been deemed a priority area for economic development by the city. Furthermore, the improvements will benefit the area's residents, including low and moderate income persons. Staff recommends that council approve the amended 2014 CDBG plan and the allocation of 2015 CDBG funds for economic development activities as described in the recommended action section on the screen, and as I've described in my presentation. Thank you for your consideration tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions or respond to any comments that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I did talk to staff today, because my big concern was, in doing this, is that we would not be reducing our funding to any of our partners that we've already allocated to, and basically, this is just a change in the funding source. Our general fund will pay, will take money, and it's already budgeted in our budget that we got tonight to fund the community development projects that we've already approved for the charitable organizations. So, this is just a matter of moving money from one pot to another, and I think it also meets our goals that we had talked about earlier today at the budget hearing, is that if we can stimulate revitalization in the downtown area, then we get more tax dollars, and we get more people downtown, then we have more money to spend the next year. So, it's, to me, it's one of the win-win situations, but I was really, really concerned about the charitable, and that will not be cut at all. So, with that.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from council? Do we have any correspondence, Jason?
No correspondence, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. This is a public hearing. We have one person at least that's signed up to address the council. When I call your name, please come to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes. There's a timer next to the city clerk, and that's Kathy Powers.
Greetings, everyone. I was under the impression that this was CDBG and human services discussion. Is there another opportunity when the council will be discussing the human services funding?
Yes. So, would you like us to be called during regular audience comment?
Is that later? So, that's later? So?
Right. There'll also be a public hearing October 20th, but we can call during your audience comment.
Okay. So, that's when I should come? Thank you.
Okay. You bet. Thank you. Was there anybody that wanted to testify on this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, seeing none, I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Prince, that the public hearing be closed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed. The ayes have it. Thank you, John. Moving on to administrative report, before you start, Mr. Covington, I think I'll ask Terry Flatley to come forward and give the council an update on action that you addressed last week in regards to tree cutting.
Good evening, Mr. Law, Mayor Law, and city council members. Thank you for allowing me to be present to present this report on the upcoming tree maintenance contract between the City of Renton and Seattle Tree Preservation Incorporated. My name is Terry Flatley. I'm the Urban Forestry and Natural Resources Manager with the City of Renton. This project covers seven city-owned locations. On the map on the screen, the red outline shows the existing city limits. The bold star is the location of City Hall, and the seven locations are the red dots on the map, and they include Windsor Hill Park to the north, Heritage Park, Liberty Park, Riverview Park, Cascade Park, Fire Station 14, and an unnamed park at the south side of the city. Before I begin, I would like to announce that Governor Jay Inslee has declared October as Urban Forestry Month in the state of Washington. With that in mind, Renton's urban forestry program serves residents, businesses, and other organizations and city departments. Our program has been recognized throughout the state as a leader in urban forestry programming. The city allows me to serve as the Urban Forestry Manager's representative on the Washington Community Forestry Council, an advisory committee to the Washington Department of Natural Resources. In 2014, the city is on track to receive its seventh Tree City USA Award. In addition, later this evening, you will hear about a grant award from the Washington Department of Natural Resources that provides a sound core crew, i.e. free labor, to prune 330 street trees in the landing during November. With limited and creative funding, Renton continues to lead the way in urban forestry programming throughout the state. The city saves thousands of trees annually from removal each year on both public and private lands. As an example, the three giant sequoias pictured in the photograph were saved from removal during the recent reconstruction of Rainier Avenue. Light pole, traffic signal, and storm drainage modifications were made in order to save these trees. However, on occasion, trees that pose a high risk of safety to the public and to property may require removal or branch pruning. In this project, the subject of this report, there are 70 trees that have been inspected, examined, and determined that they need to be pruned or removed as number-one priorities out of over 3,200 other trees that have been inspected, some dating back to 2010. The first location is at Liberty Park, where there are 17 cottonwood trees lining the north bank of the Cedar River. We're not removing 17 trees there. Every tree has been damaged severely by beavers continually chewing on the bark over many years. Five of these trees have been identified as high-risk trees because of the combination of beaver damage, the presence of root and stem diseases as a result of the beaver damage, and their proximity to valuable targets such as city streets, a high-use park, a portion of the Cedar River Trail, and the library. In subsequent photographs, trees for removal will be indicated by a green dot, like you see on the map above, and an orange dot for pruning. An example of the damage that these trees have suffered because of the beavers is this large 49-inch diameter cottonwood tree. The tree has been chewed completely around the circumference of the tree, and that cuts off the flow of nutrients and water up the tree. And there's my little furry friend there, hard at work. As an aside, that beaver, I believe, was about 45 pounds. They get quite large. The second location is at Riverview Park, where their cottonwood trees go very fast and reach maturity at about 45 years of age. While they can live beyond 90 years, many trees deteriorate quickly at a relatively young age. At Riverview, old age and past storm damage are the culprits in the decline of these cottonwood trees scattered along the edge of where picnic tables, benches, walking paths, and a shelter exist. Most of these trees have been damaged by past storms that knocked out the main stem leader of the tree. New sprouts took over as the new treetop many years ago. Hollow cavities exist in the location of the old main stem leader, and vigorous sprouts have enlarged to tree sizes themselves. This has created a dangerous condition where the hollow cavities increase in size with age, and the sprouts become larger and heavier, exerting stress on the diseased and decayed wood. In addition, there are several tree trunks that are hollow to various extents, and they're leaning. Some tree pruning will occur to remove larger sprouts that are leaning over picnic grounds and to remove ivy. The photograph gives an example of one of those hollow trees, a large cottonwood tree 46 inches in diameter, and it has about a four-foot-wide cavity that extends about 20 feet up into the tree. The third location is Heritage Park, which is in the Highlands, and it has several tall Douglas firs that have died or are in severe decline. These trees loom over a trailer park to the west, over in this area. Any one of them is capable of reaching the closest homes. Several other dead firs have fallen in the past in the same area that we've removed. Two big-leaf maples have recently failed and will be added to the contract later on, and they're up in the upper northwest corner of the park. The blue arrows in this picture show the location of some of the dead or declining firs in relation to the homes on the west side of the Heritage Park. The left arrow points to a fir that is completely dead, while the other two are in decline. Our fourth location is Cascade Park, which has many cottonwood trees along its borders, especially along this eastern border here. Several have had branch failures, which has damaged adjacent property, including a storage shed and two wooden fences. One tree is hollow and will be removed. The other five trees will be pruned so that branches don't hang over the adjacent properties. And here's a shot of that eastern boundary showing the fence in relation to the cottonwood trees that are in the park. Our next location is Windsor Hill Park, and in the southwest corner and along northeast Fourth Place, there's a clump big-leaf maple that's in decline. It affects the safety of walkers and vehicles using the roadway. And in this photo, you can see a lot of dead wood in these trees, or hollow, they're cracked, and it represents a danger to the roadway. The next location is the unnamed park. It was acquired relatively recently through the Benson Hill Annexation, and has several trees that have been banged up over the years by windstorms and have declined due to age. Several healthier cottonwood trees will be pruned so their branches don't hang over adjacent properties. So, these trees here will be pruned, and here's an example of a pretty bad tree that's a little obscured, but there's several more of those in the park. Our last location would be Fire Station 17. Fire Station 17 is at the corner of Lynde Avenue Southwest and Southwest 19th Street. Many of the trees were planted too close to the building when it was constructed, and others have been damaged by recent wind and ice storms. Much of the work includes pruning branches away from the building, removing overcrowded conditions, and removing several diseased and dead cherry trees. The photograph shows an example of an American beech tree that's hanging over the building, dropping leaves on the roof, and an incense cedar tree behind it that's getting quite large, creating a lot of shady conditions and ruining the siding and the roof itself. In summary, the seven locations, there's 43 tree removals, 27 tree prunings, for a total of 70 trees. The contract agreement with Seattle Tree Preservation is being finalized. Upon execution, the company will provide a timeline for work to begin, and currently, the completion date for this project is December 31, 2014. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Terry. Any questions from council? Okay. Thank you very much, Terry. Mr. Covington?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, council. Just a couple of quick things. The River Rock Restaurant, which is located at Maplewood Golf Course, will be closed tomorrow, Wednesday. While the Clubhouse Boiler System is being replaced, it'll reopen on Thursday with normal business hours. And beginning Wednesday, the Senior Activity Center will be open in the evening until 9:00 p.m. The pool room, card room, and exercise room will be open for drop-in use. Classes will also be offered. This comes from a recommendation from the community that was reviewed and considered in the Senior Business Plan Focus Group. That's all, Mr. Mayor?
Good. Thank you. Next is audience comment, and I had several people signed up, but all I see are Howard and Kathy and staff. So, Howard?
Howard McConville, living in the Renton Highlands. I want to thank all of you for your support for the Renton Economic Association's charity fundraiser that we had last Thursday. It was a great success. We had a lot of people there. It gave us a great opportunity to express the fact that we all need to work together to help the people who are at the very bottom of every ladder that exists in the city. These are the folks who are sleeping on a bench tonight, or will be finding some scrub brush to get under, or something else. We have that, by the way. I had the privilege of serving breakfast to 50 of them this morning, and I will Wednesday, and I will every Monday and Wednesday from here out, and anybody who wants to come down and to help serve a little breakfast can come any Monday or Wednesday, 8:00, down at Harambe, which was the Old Eagles Club. And we have, our hope is that we'll be able to have this breakfast seven days a week. Right now, it's only two, and then the guys put on one on Thursday. But that means a lot of people are hungry. They have a meal every evening available at the Salvation Army at 5:30, and if you know anybody who needs one, or would like to go, or if you'd like to come see how it's done, we'd love to invite you to come. The big thing is, we're always going to need help, and I realize I was sitting through the budget meeting before this. There isn't going to be any budget from the city to speak of, to go for a lot of things. Everybody has a need, but this is where we can volunteer and help, and I know a lot of you here do a lot of volunteering and a lot of helping, and I appreciate that, but everybody has something they can give. Those who have, want to give back, you can give back if you want to see the amount of human suffering that's eliminated. It doesn't take much. It takes about $75 in food to feed 50 guys in the morning. That's not huge. That's because you have all volunteers doing everything. That's the cost of it, plus the fact that we have some people who volunteer a lot of the food. But we can do this. We can get together. We really do not need to have, in the city of Renton, anybody starve to death. That's not a good idea. We don't need to have anybody really, really hungry, either. We have more than 400 children that the Renton School District has on their rolls as being homeless. That's not too swift. We have a lot of things. We have a lot of room to grow, and a lot of things we can do to help, and just want to continue it. I appreciate your support. That's been fabulous. Appreciate your help and everything, but we're going to keep coming back and asking for help and support because it's there, and we need it, and this group has a tremendous amount that you can do, because we can't do it without your help. Now, we've had, like, Teri Higashima is fabulous, and she did all the centerpieces and worked her heart out with Kelly and all kinds of people, staff. I won't stop maybe days of... I'll either run out of time, or I'll get myself in real trouble missing someone. We have a lot of people on the city staff who volunteer out of the goodness of their heart, come down and support, reach, and try and help the people on the very bottom end. We'll be coming back to you for help. Now, there's some things you can do as a council. You can make rules that are easier for us to follow. You can, what we're looking for in the future will be a shelter, besides going downstairs, a shelter, period, where people can get out of the cold. Right now, the cold weather shelters don't start when the weather gets cold. It's when it gets life-threatening. We'd like to have shelters before it gets life-threatening, when it's just really uncomfortable. Every time when you go to bed tonight, you go to bed in a bed between sheets, realize there's people out there who haven't been in a bed for a long time, and they're going to be suffering, and it could be eliminated or lessened by cooperation. Appreciate all your cooperation and all of your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anybody else who wanted to address the council? Okay, moving on, I'm sorry.
Can I jump in?
You sure can. Come on up.
All right. Mayor Law and council members, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak a little prematurely on the human services.
Sorry, can I give your name and city of residence for the record?
I can do so. Kathy Powers, and I live in Seattle, and I work at Orion Industries in Auburn, Washington.
Thank you.
So speaking on behalf of Orion this evening. So Orion Industries just moved to Auburn in early 2014, and we were recommended for, we asked for $7,500, recommended for $5,000 through the Human Services Fund in the city of Renton, and I wanted to come and say thank you, and tell you just briefly what we do. We offer job training to individuals who are extremely low-income and also who have disabilities, many times many other barriers, including educational barriers, as well as criminal backgrounds. So individuals who need a lot of support in order to make it in the competitive labor market. So we do job training in our manufacturing business, our contact center business, and through an office skills training program. Then we offer intensive job placement services, one-to-one, and retention services, both with the employer and the individual, to make sure that they are able to keep their job wages. This year, average placement wage is $12 an hour, which I know is still low, but it's into places that offer career opportunities and advancement. So we're trying to target those industries. It's taking individuals who are previously unemployed and allowing them an opportunity to earn a wage and to start their work life, or restart their work life. Our return on investment is three-to-one. For every dollar we receive in public support, $3 our return to the economy through tax dollars and cessation of public benefits that the individual is receiving. So I wanted to just say thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to consent agenda. We have eight items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member would like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor, seeing none, I move the consent agenda be adopted as read.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Carmen, that council approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Person.
Aye. No unfinished business.
Okay, Ms. Palmer?
No unfinished business.
Mr. Carmen?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Taylor?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pavoni?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Utility Committee has one report to be read.
Utilities Committee, committee report. Airport lift station replacement project budget adjustment. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve an adjustment to the airport lift station replacement project budget, to increase the project budget to cover unexpected construction costs, and to reestablish an approximate 10% contingency fund in the amount of $100,000 by authorizing the transfer of $100,000 from the 2014 sanitary sewer rehabilitation replacement project account to the airport lift station replacement project account. The budget adjustment associated with this project will be included in the next budget adjustment ordinance. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
I'd like to move that council concur with the utility committee's findings.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Pavoni, second by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the Utilities Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, Ms. Brier?
I have no unfinished business.
Okay, and Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Resolutions and ordinances. We have one resolution and one ordinance for first reading.
The resolution is regarding the interlocal agreement with the Department of Natural Resources. Resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter to an interlocal agreement with the Washington State Department of Natural Resources entitled Interagency Agreement with the city of Renton.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Taylor, that this resolution be adopted as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The ordinance is for first reading is regarding a change to the municipal code. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending Section 121 of Chapter 2 ordinances of Title 1 Administrative of the Renton Municipal Code, clarifying the applicability of modifications to the Renton Municipal Code.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Prince, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Jason. Moving on to new business, Mr. Person.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The two things, first of all, let me be sure I get the date right here. City council, the committee, the whole, will meet next Monday, October 13th. It's hard to believe that it's that late in the year already. At 4:00 PM in the council chambers, and it'd be the 2015-2016 budget review. And also, I would move that the council approve the amended 2014 CDBG funding plan to allocate $78,717 for commercial rehabilitation activities. Approve the 2015 CHBG funding plan to allocate $630,272 for King County contractual set asides, city planning slash administration, and commercial rehabilitation and public infrastructure activities as provided in the staff presentation. And approve the 2015 CDBG funding contingency plan to equally split any increase or decrease of HUD allocation amounts between commercial rehabilitation and public infrastructure activities. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Carmen, that council approve the three requested amendments to the CDBG funding package. Any further discussion, questions, answers? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, Ms. Palmer?
Yes, the Transportation Committee will meet this Thursday, October 9th, at 4:30. Two items on the agenda. The first is KPG Inc. consultant agreement for Main Avenue South Downtown Circulation Project Phase 1, and the second item is emerging issues in transportation. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Carmen?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Pavoni.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
And Ms. Brier?
Yes, next Monday, the 13th, at 3:30 PM in the council conference room. Finance Committee will be meeting on three issues: the King County Metro Lease Addendum, city center parking garage spaces, vouchers, and emerging issues in revenue streams. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On Thursday at 3:00 PM on the council conference room, the Planning and Development Committee will be meeting. We have the following five items on our agenda. Title IV Development Regulation Socket Number 10A, 2015 Comprehensive Plan Housing Human Services Element, 2015 Comprehensive Plan Community Plan Element, Title IV Development Plan Development Regulation Socket 10B, and 2015 Comprehensive Plan Transportation Element. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
You're going to be busy.
I know.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. Okay, last audience comment opportunity. Sherry, did you want to address the council?
Seeing none, I move we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Prince, that we adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?